Like to call to order the July 28th, Clive City Council meeting. Would the clerk please call roll? Mayor Edwards?
Here.
Council members Klein?
Here.
McCoy? Judkins?
Here.
Weaver?
Here.
Nicola Nani?
Here.
Very good. If you all would please rise and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have our agenda. I am not aware of any changes, so it entertains a motion to approve.
We have approval.
Have we a motion and a second to approve the agenda? Further discussion? Seeing one, all those in favor say aye.
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 Pose like sign. The agenda is approved. Next item on the agenda is the citizen presentation. This is the opportunity for anyone to approach the council on an item that is not on the agenda. And Pete, I'll let you check online to see if anyone is online waiting to present to the meeting. While Pete does that, let me just read our support for pillars. That is, we support character counts endeavoring at all times for mode and model the principles of trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. In conducting our work, we expect that everyone will act in a manner respectful to others. Pete, do we have anyone online?
For those who'd like to get our attention, who are participating online, you can use the raise hand function on your Zoom screen. At the bottom of the screen, there's an icon that says actions. If you click on that, a small window will open up where you'll be able to press the raise hand button. Do not see anybody online raising their hand at this time there.
Thank you. Do you have anyone in the chamber who'd like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? If you please come forward and state your name and address for our record, please. Yes?
Morgan Rivers, 1340 Northwest 105th Place in Clive.
What do you have for us this evening?
Well, this is my first meeting. So I'm sure how this works, but I, my concern relates to equality of life issue about the Green Belt Trail. And I know that it has a high place in Clive, and I appreciate that, that you have given it such great attention. We moved here in 2013 because of the Green Belt, and we love it. And I've also been a garlic mustard volunteer until I was replaced by the goats, which I'm happy about. My concern is the loud music that some bikers and occasional walkers play on the trail. I go there for bikes and walks for peace and quiet stress relief, and it's shattered every time somebody goes by blasting loud music on their speakers. And so it puts me in a stress response, and a lot of times I come back feeling worse than when I left. So I'm hoping something could be done about this. I can imagine it would be a nightmare, but I'm trying to enforce anything. But, and I don't know whether this is an issue you've already discussed before. But I would love, I would hope that something could be done about it. I assume that the noise ordinances are exceeded by the volume on those loudspeakers. So that's, I guess that's basically my concern. And I'm not sure how things work. If there's something I can do to pursue it as being an agenda item or something, I'd be happy to do that.
Well, thank you for coming forward, Matt.
Yeah, thanks, Your Honor. Yeah, we'll definitely take a look at some things in terms of the noise ordinance. And some of it may be just some good public education in terms of respect for neighboring property owners when folks are on the Green Belt. Unfortunately, we have people from numbering a number of communities who come through. And so it might be a public education effort. Enforcement may be difficult to, you know, if it's obviously egregious and it is a noise violation, the police department has to catch it like right at the time. But so let staff maybe talk about this a little bit and maybe some efforts that we could do. And I definitely understand the concerns, and we can take a look at that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seems like Matt followed the category of trail etiquette, perhaps?
Right. And we've talked about that around this table before in terms of some thoughts, in terms of proper passing, proper etiquette, what, you know, in terms of when you have bikes and strollers and people walking dogs, there's kind of a, this could fall into that category, Your Honor.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the chamber that would like to address the council on the item that is not on the agenda? Seeing no one coming forward, we'll move to the consent items, which requires a resolution. Some moves?
Second.
Very good. Further discussion? If not, would the council please vote? And would the clerk please post that vote? And our consent items are approved by a vote of four to zero. Next up, we have our action items. And first of all, Matthew, was the appropriate public notice published?
Yes, Your Honor. It was published in the Des Moines Register on July 11th, 2022.
Very good. Matt?
Thanks, Your Honor. Yeah, tonight we have a public hearing, and we have Todd Knox from Snyder and Associates here, who was the design consultant on this particular project. I'm jumping in for Jeff and Jim, who are on vacation this week. So before you, we've had two bids that were taken. If the council will recall, we bid this initially last fall, got one bidder, pretty substantially high bid. Since then, we've been reworking the project, also working with the city of Waukees. They've decided on their side of the street to add some additional intersection improvements on brick, so adjacent to it to combine into the project. So there's now two major divisions in the project. One, Division Two, which is the shared portion of the project between the city of Clive and city Waukees. And then Division One, I think I've got that right, Todd, which is all 100% Waukees, which is mainly the paving work, additional paving work that is their responsibility. We've got some shared intersection improvements that we're doing along with the traffic signal. As the council will recall too, this is a special assessment project for the commercial properties on the Clive side, the 20 or so properties that consented to the special assessment when the traffic signal was put into place. And I'll let Todd kind of talk through the bids that were received, how they break down in the divisions. And then we'll talk about generally, you know, staff is supportive of what we're seeing. We did see a little bit higher bid. But with combination with the grant that we've now been told is going to be accepted by the DOT and the special assessment revenue coming in, it wouldn't be any additional cost to the city of Clive. So Todd, do you want to jump in on the bids that we received?
Sure, yeah. The two bids were received. The engineer's estimate was just over 1.1 million. The low bid from Mintern came in at just under 1.4 million with the high bid from, don't have it right. Serenquist, there you go. Thank you, Matt. That came in at just almost 1.6 million. So both bids were quite high. As they broke down, Division One, the Waukees portion, was just, was around $720,000. The shared Division Two was at $680,000. So those were, again, high for what we were expecting. We did a comparison between the unit prices for the engineer's estimate versus the low bid. Most of the items were high, unfortunately. The ones that stood out mostly from the low bid were like pavement and mobilization and then excavation. The bidding the project at this time, it just delayed it further, and we're afraid that we just see increased costs. So our engineers' recommendation was to award the contract to Mintern.
Thank you, Todd. Questions from the council on this?
Have we worked with Mintern before?
No, I'm thinking back and off the top of my head, I don't think they've been a recent contractor for us that we've had in the last number of years. But we're familiar with them. We know they do a lot of work in the market. I don't know if you want to, can speak to that, Todd, in terms of their work. But I know the bidders are familiar to us, but Mintern themselves has not done any recent work in Clive.
I would just concur with Matt's explanation on that. I'm more associated with the traffic signal side of the project, but we work with numerous contractors, and I'd be, I'm sure we can work with Mintern as well.
Staff comfortable with Mintern then?
Yes, we are.
Thank you.
Any further questions? So with a motion to close public hearing, is there a second?
Second.
Motion to close public hearing. Further discussion?
Yeah, I just want to check real quick. You mentioned that a lot of the itemized prices came in higher than the estimate. Is there like a, was there any comparison in to just confirm that it's kind of in line with what we're seeing across the board as far as, you know, hey, this is an 11% increase that we're just seeing because of inflationary and supply chain constraints?
There, yeah, there definitely is a consistent with those. We tried to include some of those in our engineer's estimate, but obviously, as times change, even from week to week, those prices adjust regularly. So we were unable to catch it with the engineer's estimate at the, when we let the project. But I mean, we're still $250,000 over the estimate. So yeah, that's kind of what we're seeing throughout projects.
Thank you. Other questions or discussion? Seeing none, let's vote on the motion to close public hearing. And would the clerk please post that vote? Motion to close the public hearing passes by a vote of four to zero. We have three items we need to consider.
Move the resolution approving plans and specs.
Second. The motion is second to approve plans and specs. Further discussion? Seeing none, would the council please vote? And would clerk please post that vote? And that passes by a vote of four to zero.
Move to receive the bids.
Second. Motion a second to receive the bids. Further discussion? Seeing none, would the council please vote? And would clerk please post that vote? Motion to receive the bids passes by a vote of four to zero.
Move the resolution awarding the contract to Mintern the amount of $1,398,084.95.
Second. Motion a second to award the contract. Further discussion? Seeing none, would the council please vote? And would clerk please post that vote? And that passes a vote of four to zero. Thank you, Todd.
Thanks, Todd.
Next, we have Shadow Creek West, Amanda. And once Amanda makes her presentation, we'll be asked to consider taking it off the table. We had tabled it at her last meeting.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Good evening. So tonight, we're hopefully having the third and final consideration of the rezoning for Shadow Creek West. As we've talked about this quite a bit previously, I'll just do a quick overview again. It's a 53-acre parcel of land located off Warrior Lane. It's one of our last remaining kind of greenfield development areas. And the developer we've worked with for quite a long time now on their previous work in Shadow Creek South, a lot of their development they've done in Shadow Creek North, and then this project as well here that we're trying to get off the ground for them. So this is for 88 single-family lots, and it is a property that has some challenges associated with the grade change and proximity to Walnut Creek, and that kind of dipped down with the road, and also has the Warrior Lane road assessment obligation with it. So your last meeting about a month ago, the direction from council at that time was for staff and the developer to work to try to see if there were creative options that we could use to address the concerns with the total cost of the Warrior Lane assessment on this property with some of those issues that really limit the overall number of lots that can feasibly be developed on it. So staff and the developer have done that over the last several weeks, and we have come to what we think is a good agreement that kind of addresses all the concerns. There will be a lump sum payment at the time of final plat for Shadow Creek West, assuming the rezoning is approved, that would go towards those Warrior Lane assessment costs. And then an associated agreement that lumps together the remaining Warrior Lane and Meredith Drive improvements associated with the properties owned by the developer not yet developed. That would allow some of the costs to be defrayed onto the future development land that doesn't have some of those same grading considerations and restrictions on the layout, and may be able to have some additional valuation associated with it beyond what we're seeing on the single-family lot. Part of it's a commercially zoned. The remainder is largely the mixed residential area. So that could be anything from single-family homes up to an apartment development. So with that, staff is comfortable, and we think the developer is happy with the agreement we've come to that still satisfies the city's full obligation, just kind of chunks it out in a few different ways for us. There is an opportunity preserved in that agreement for a performance credit. So if, within the designated timeframe of the assessed valuations for January 1st, 2027, so giving about four and a half years to get build-out completed on this development. If it far exceeds the expected valuations for the goals the city has, there is opportunity to rebate or refund some of the would-be assessed costs for the remaining future development land. And that is really just the opportunity for the developer to prove themselves and have that opportunity there with the thought that these will be fairly high-dollar homes that would hopefully exceed the million-dollar-per-acre targets that we have in place today.
Thank you, Amanda. Questions from the council?
Yeah, do you have the photo of the kind of the development area? I think there's been some changes there with the Green Belt access. Yeah.
There haven't really been any significant changes. So what we're, sorry, what we're seeing here is still this trail access preserve between 11 and 12, lot 11 to 12 up to the north side, and then maintaining that trail access as we go to the south end of the development, still through Lot 49 and 50 and throughout Lot W. So those are the same areas we had identified as those likely trail connections throughout. And we do, we do believe we can get the trail connection at the north end accomplished through the construction drawings as we've continued to look into that.
Okay. And any, any thoughts that, you know, this would come later, but any thoughts on being able to put like maybe a small park or something down the road in that area? Or?
Yeah, so I know at the last meeting, Richard kind of talked about some of the long-term plans for active use within the Green Belt. That would still be the intent for this area. There are some buyer retention facilities shown that the city will ultimately, the intent is to own all of the outlots to be incorporated into the Green Belt. So we'll get some additional land that way. So there could be some opportunity for some of that more active recreation area. Still probably not a traditional playground-type use in this situation. But yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Amanda, is there an easement from the city in that middle lot? If you could go towards that, the middle portion of the plat?
This area?
Yes.
Which area are you asking about?
The edge on that, on the edge right there. I just wondered if that was some type of a city easement or what that was.
This line work?
No, keep going, keep going up, keep going up.
Between 31, 32.
Oh, here?
Between 31 and 32.
Yeah, yep. So that one is the sanitary sewer access and sanitary sewer easement.
Okay, thank you.
Ted, any questions?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Just one, Amanda, there was some conversation last time about the possible need for retaining walls and things of that nature. Has all that kind of fallen by the wayside? We're not looking at that now. Is that accurate?
So we'll still have to get into the full details with the construction drawings. But as we've looked into it more, we think we can accomplish getting those, that trail in with just adjustments to grading plans.
Okay, good. All right, so that's not being required of the developer or anything like that?
Correct. If we do find that the construction drawings, that something like a retaining wall would be necessary, we can bring that back before you all. Typically, those are approved on the consent agenda. But if we do find that it's not working out the way we're expecting, we could always have that on your action agenda to discuss.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, what we're looking for is a motion to take it off the table to be able to consider it.
Motion to take ordinance 1121 off the table?
With a motion?
Second.
And a second? Further discussion? Seeing none, would the council please vote on taking the motion off the table? And then would the clerk please post that vote? And that passes by a vote of four to zero. So it's off the table now and can be considered for its third reading.
Motion for to... What is, which one am I looking at here?
The third one down. You're moving the ordinance to be considered for a third time. Move to... Proceed.
Move the ordinance 1121 be considered for the third time, placed upon its passage and adopted.
And do we have a second for the third reading?
Second.
Now, further discussion? If not, would the council please vote on the third reading? And then would the clerk please post that vote? That passes by a vote of four to zero. Ordinance number 1121 is declared to be enacted. Thank you. Now, we still have a few more items with this.
Yep, so I had briefly given you the main overview of that Warrior and Meredith Drive improvements agreement that is associated with this as well. So staff could answer any questions you may have on that as well before you vote.
Any questions on that? If not, again, we're looking for the resolution.
Just a quick question. So I think I see Dave in the room. Are we, so we're comfortable that the developer is good with this agreement? He's happy with the final outcome? Because we did have a lot of conversation on this at that last meeting.
Hello, Mayor, City Council. Dave Harmeyer, 2486 Street, Suite 24, Urbandale. Happy is a strong word. No, I do appreciate the staff to working for a creative solution for us. It gives us a chance to make it work in the long run, but it also gives us a chance in the short run from a cash flow perspective to move forward on the Shadow Creek West development, which was a huge concern considering the marketplace. So we are satisfied with the agreement as it's drafted. I'm happy to answer any questions, others.
Any other questions?
Yeah, sorry, Dave. I didn't, I shouldn't have used the word happy. I meant to say satisfied.
Happy's a good, happy's a good word. It's a real challenge. And I know we got a little emotional about that the last time. I apologize for that, and I appreciate the consideration. And the staff's been great to really come up with some ideas that we hadn't seen before, and so we are satisfied with it.
Very good.
Thank you.
We're looking here for a resolution.
I'll move a resolution.
Thank you, Ted. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? If not, would the council please vote? And would the clerk please post that vote? And the resolution passes by a vote of four...
That's an improving public improvement project. Thank you. Oh, yeah, it's a public improvement agreement. Never mind, we're good.
We're good. Just to clarify, we're good.
I'll move to approve the preliminary plat.
Second. Motion and a second to approve the preliminary plat. Further discussion? Seeing none, would the council please vote? And would the clerk please post that vote? And that passes by a vote of four to zero to approve that preliminary plat. Amanda, home occupation.
Thank you. Yes, so we now have before you the second consideration of an ordinance amending our home occupation provisions. As we discussed at your last meeting, that is due to a change in the state law that has restricted some of the ways we previously regulated and also limited some of the types of businesses we can require to register. Councilwoman Judkins made a wonderful observation that we may be unintentionally putting a significant fencing burden on our in-home childcare facilities. That was certainly not the intent. And so we have inserted new language with working with our legal counsel as well on that in Level One and Level Two areas where those home, home care, childcare uses would be permitted. That just states the outdoor play area is typical to a residential setting and associated with childcare shall not be required to construct additional screening or fencing beyond the requirements of the state code. So that eliminates any concern with what impacts those may have, but does allow us still some level of discretion if someone is, you know, putting in a very over-the-top commercial-level playground that would not be a typical setting. So we could still have those kinds of conversations at that time. So with that, staff would recommend approval, and we would also recommend waiving the third consideration since the state law is in effect.
Thank you, Amanda. Questions for Amanda? Anyone here at the table or online with questions? If there aren't questions, then I'd entertain a motion to suspend the rules. Some move?
Second.
Motion to suspend the rules with regard to ordinance number 1124. Further discussion? If not, would the council please vote? And would the clerk please post that vote? We've suspended the rules by a vote of four to zero. Now, would someone like to move the ordinance?
Move the ordinance 1124. Having been considered by the council, be voted on for passage prior to final adoption.
Well, I think you're actually leaving the next one. Try the next one.
Move that ordinance number 1124 be considered, placed upon its passage and adopted.
That works. Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Thank you. Further discussion? If not, would the council please vote? And then would the clerk please post the vote? That passes by a vote of four to zero. Ordinance number 1124 is declared to be enacted. Thank you. Pete, some great survey results you're going to tell us about.
Yes, Your Honor. One moment, I'll pull up my presentation.
All right, thank you, Your Honor. I am very happy to get a chance to make this presentation every two years. It's especially fun to do the presentation, though, when the results are strong and consistent is what we see here in our 2022 resident survey results. First, I want to review some of the methods and some of the terms that you'll hear me use tonight as we're describing the results. First, we had 2,800 randomly selected Clive households receiving the mailings beginning on April 20th, and the survey remained open for seven weeks. The response rate we had was 18%. It's probably more useful, though, when we're comparing survey years to look at the total responses because of variations on how many people were invited to participate. The total number of responses was 494 this year compared to 520 in 2020. So if we were looking at response rate percentages, it might look like there was a decrease, but we're really only talking about a few dozen different differences in households. 291 did it on the online, and 203 completed it on paper. We are trying in the future at Polco's Good Direction to move more and more of this to an online setting. It's not any surprise, though, that the way that people are sort of... It's not any surprise though, that the way that people are sort of approaching surveys today, they're much less inclined to participate, especially with the random selection type surveys. So we're going to need to keep working hard to build up uh, the response rates so that we get a statistically good sample. The other good piece of news there with the responses that we now have 278 subscribers, I call them sort of our bench. So as we want to do more of that micro polling using the Polco online tool, this is a group of people that we can go back to and build over time. So we keep getting more direct feedback as you'd want it on any number of issues that are facing the community. It's a very powerful tool that I look forward to leveraging more in the future. Few points there on uh, just basics of reading a survey like this. The confidence interval, we reached a 95% confident, 95% confident interval. That's consistent with polling norms. The statistical significant difference. Excuse me, I skipped from margin of error, plus or minus four. And that's really only to be applied when we're looking at results for the entire population, not any of the sub demographic groups that we look at when we're looking at the cross tabs. Statistical significance is what we're going to use when we talk about difference between different demographic groups. And that will vary depending on the two, uh, the different demographics we're comparing, whether it's an area geographically of the city or race or gender or any of the other demographics. Waiting, waiting is what we talk about to, when we want to make sure that the survey, the respondents that participated in the survey, that their opinions actually look like the larger population of Clive. So we don't have this perfect number of responses from each geographic area, as an example, to get the right waiting so that populations uh, that they're, that data matches up with the actual populations in Clive. We do the, the waiting. Our waiting tool was to compare results to the 2010 census and the 2019 American Community Survey. Finally, benchmarks. I think we're all familiar with that. Polco has hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of communities that use the survey tool in any given year. For our purposes of this survey, we're looking at all the communities that asked a given question in the last five years to establish what our benchmark is. Any methods, questions? Okay. Here's one of the best pieces about, uh, best pieces of news about our 22, 22 survey compared to what we've done in the past. Even in 2020, uh, we needed to combine some districts to be able to get statistically significant results. We had last in 2020 combined one and two, four and five, and six and seven. This time around, we've got statistically significant results for every single district. Which means that the cross tabs look significantly more complex. But it's going to help us look even more, with more precision at differences in opinions, especially by geography, which is a topic we've come back to many, many times. It's a, it's a big lift to get through all of that. I don't want to make sure, I want to make sure we accurately represent the real signal here and not accidentally give people noise. So uh, we're, we look forward to investigating across the cross tabs for many, many months to come and bring uh, hopefully additional insights into strategic planning and other discussions that happened over the course of the year. The presentation tonight though, is going to really uh, stay focused on some of the things that we see about the opinions across the entire community, across all demographic groups. In case you're interested though, the, the actual raw responses that we received from each of the districts. We had 24 from District One, 79 from District Two, 84 from District Three, 835 from District Four, 104 from District Five, 50 from District Six, and District Seven had 118. The rest of the presentation tonight, like the report that was in your packet, is organized based on these facets of livability that organize the survey tool and then organize the way that in the Polco team sort of thinks about engaging with their clients around the data. On the left there, you see that circle with each of those facets. Notice that that broader category of the overall quality of life is not one of the facets. Same way with governance. They consider both of those two, those uh, areas to be sort of so all encompassing or so interconnected to being able to do any, one of these things, right? Like utilities that they sort of break them out separately. But tonight you'll see me kind of fold them into our discussion as we talk about each of those facets of livability. On the right-hand side, you see a pretty traditional chart for making sense of data that was both going to measure the importance that people place on things and then the quality that they assign to those things. So quality, the importance uh, axis is there at the bottom, importance running from a 60% to 100% and quality then runs vertically from 60% up to 100%. As a starting point, I'd say to look at that and know that we don't have anything on our chart that is sub 60% for either importance or for quality. So even if you see something there in that far left-hand corner, which would be not important and lower quality, we're still looking at things that people put significant importance on and also see Clive delivering significant quality. So the difference here between any of the quadrants is not maybe as great as the chart makes it appear. Still, we can, uh, it's important, I think, to really focus on those things that folks have said that while it's all important, there are some that we particularly think are important. And that's what you see on the right-hand side of the chart. That's where we're going to focus most of our discussion tonight. Though I'm certainly happy to uh, come back and talk about other facets of livability that are more toward the left-hand side of the chart.
Real quick, when, when I was looking through the, the packet and the, the report on this, you know, there was some discuss, there was some discussion in the report about how the items in the lower left-hand sector should also be discussed, right? Obviously, we only have bandwidth for a certain amount of things, but any, any thoughts on that?
They, I think, described it as balancing performance and the importance versus importance. I would agree with their assessment that if it's on this chart, it's all important. Some of the things that I see there on the left-hand side also start to touch on things that are not in Clive circumstance completely are more so directly in our control. For example, the health and wellness, it's rated as really, really good. But we're not the ones delivering access to affordable healthcare as a city of Clive. So I would recommend, while we can certainly discuss those things, and there are a lot of things that go into health and wellness, that would be an example of one where we might want to not have as much conversation, though certainly some is warranted. And any community that doesn't mark, no, hit that mark, whether it's the city providing it or somebody else, that's a big miss. You got to make sure you're doing it well. Same with everything else on the chart.
I think I would add to, particularly to this chart is what's really good, I think, for us, when we look at this, is there's nothing in the lower right um, that they indicated. So lower right would be low quality, high importance. So I think that's a good thing for the council to, to understand with this chart. Lower right, that's something that our citizens are saying, this is important to me and I don't think the quality is as high. Seeing things in the upper right, great. Things to the left, again, um, show that the, the quality is up there. The importance may not, you know, maybe as high. But what I was looking for was anything in the lower right and, you know, utilities is, and as people get into it is kind of a nebulous one because a lot of things are lumped in with that, including um, internet, electric, you know, things that aren't are not in necessarily, necessarily in the city's purview, but then a lot of utilities that are like water and sewer. And that's the only one that's below the median. Uh, but the median is still at 95%, or excuse me, 80, about 87, 88% in terms of overall quality. So um, again, it's uh, it's a different, it's a, it's a nice tool. Don't, don't want to over index on it, but for me it was, there's nothing in the lower right, so that's at least a good sign.
Right. So I, I can be put even a sharper point on, that's really a good comment there. First off, Clive respondents look very similar to the national benchmarks when it comes to the importance they place on any number of these facets. So there's not some big outlier among Clive respondents saying that for example, that uh, uh, natural environment is significantly uh, more important here than it would be in some other place. So we line up like a lot of other communities. Where we are different than other communities is in how, is how incredibly strong our residents feel about the performance of the city. So Clive's ranking was higher than the national benchmark for economic health, quality of the transportation system, overall design and layout of residential commercial areas, overall quality of utility infrastructure, overall feeling of safety, overall quality of natural environment, overall quality of parks and recreation, and overall health and wellness opportunities. There were only two others where uh, double check that. Um, there were only a couple of facets where we were considered similar. Not poor, but just similar. The uh, ratings of higher or much higher for Clive across all of the factors that measure, that add up into one of these factors of livability. Clive was higher than the national benchmark in 79 of the 107 questions that were asked. The uh, I would take any questions folks have now sort of about broadly the facets before we dive into each of the most important ones that's identified by the residents. Okay, so let's dive in. Clive is a place to live. This is a story here that we can, we should absolutely be thrilled to share with every resident and every business. For at least as long as we've been asking this question, residents have consistently said that Clive is a good or excellent place to live. 97% is just absolutely shocking. For comparison purposes to earlier years, if you see a 6% to change, up or down from either 2022 to 2020 or 2022 to any previous year, that's considered statistically significant. What you see here on these three charts, Clive is a place to live, overall quality of life, overall economic health is steady, excellent, consistent. I don't know if a city could do better. That's just a real compliment to these residents and to the businesses and everybody who has a stake in making Clive a great place to live. It's not just the city, right? It's all of these partners and everything else that comes together in this metro. Safety. This is one where I specifically want to uh, not just recognize all of our, our first responder teams, but especially our police services because unlike what we've seen in a number of other communities throughout the country where some confidence has decreased in police services specifically. That has not been the case in Clive, not been the case in Clive. That's excellent, consistent performance for police services and obviously also for our fire services. And our, uh, in general, I want to point out that, that bottom number there around emergency preparedness. You see the green arrow. I'll put those arrows throughout the presentation, green up, red down to mark where there are places that either over time or in the most recent period from 2020 to 2022, we have a change that is statistically significant. Happy to see though, that number on emergency preparedness go that direction. And I believe, although I don't, I want to be cautious about citing too much causation here. But in that time period from 2016 to 2022, we have been doing a lot of communicating to the residents about flood risk, about active, uh, about 911 services, about a number of other things that they can do to make sure that they are keeping their families and their properties safe. Parks and Recreation, Natural Environment, the hallmark really in so many ways of who we are as a city and as a community where we strive to be good stewards of our natural spaces and come together in our parks. Again, consistent excellence over multiple years. The preservation of natural areas, again, in particular, if you look back to the 2016 number, shows a statistically significant difference. It stayed steady at a high level from 2020. Okay. Ah, that's right. At this point, I also wanted to note one more thing. It's not here on this chart, but it is one of the numbers I hope that caught your attention. For the past year, two years, we've been talking quite a bit about water resources in Clive. This year and in 2020, we asked about the perception the residents have of our water resources. There was a 25% increase from 61% in 2020 to 86% 2020, saying that is good or excellent. Now, I'm not going to say that our residents have the most informed opinion of our water resources, but I take that to mean that they have a growing affection for and awareness of them. Which sets the stage, I believe, for us to continue to do more public education and more engagement around this important issue in Clive. It also tells a, a good story about what can happen when the city really puts its muscle behind a particular issue. If we have a place where there is a perceived deficit or where we need to build up more broad knowledge about a topic and we get behind it with our storytelling, we can get the community to that, can we get the community there by working closely with them and, and creating good messages. Utilities, also a very positive story here for our utilities. Consistently higher than what we see with national benchmark, with the exception of recycling, and I want to call that out, hand yard waste pickup. In both of those areas this year, from 2020 to 2022, we did see a statistically significant drop, especially there with recycling. I want to talk, well, share this information, obviously with all our partners, there's information about schools, there's information about food pantries, there's information that will affect many of our partners and we want them to be able to get this data because we believe it's actionable. In this case, we'll be sharing it with our friends at Metro Waste and starting to discuss what we might be seeing here as a possible cause. But let's not also think that we're somehow really, really slipping because with things like yard waste pickup and with uh, uh, garbage collection, we still are at either a very high level, like 92% good or excellent for garbage collection, or we are similar to the benchmark as we are with recycling.
Now, with the recycling, I know, I know we don't want to go too far into causation and things like that, but do you think some of that might be because of some of, well, it may not be clear to all residents that, you know, you can put some recycling next to your bin and they'll still be picked up. You know, I've talked to a few residents that have said, oh, I didn't know you could do that, right? Do you think some of that might be playing into it that they see this kind of artificial limitation on recycling pickup or again, I know we don't want to get too far down that path, but.
I think we, I think uh, that could be. What I'd like to do actually is take this to Metro Waste and see if they have anything within their industry's polling that tells us what might be happening here in Clive because they're seeing something similar happening and happening in other communities too. With the yard waste pickup, we thought there might be that drop from 89% in 2020 to 83% in 2022 because we made some changes to the bundled brush pickup program. We got rid of the free pickups that were happening in the spring and the fall when we changed carriers. Did that drive this? I don't think we can say conclusively that that was the case looking at this, but it's a pretty good educated guess that that might be it. With the recycling, the last time we made a big change, but it was also a change with the garbage collection, it was with the carts. We changed the carts back in 2020.
Even after the previous survey.
Mm-hmm. After the previous survey, we uh, I would have, that was, that was a tough process. It was logistically very difficult and we got it done with a lot of help from uh, our partners at Metro Waste. I thought we might see some change there, but it doesn't appear that with, at least with the garbage collection, that pro, that, that sort of experience created any kind of a hangover for us.
Right.
Now, this is my favorite part of the survey where we get to talk about governance and just broadly people's confidence in the way that the city is operating and to achieve uh, great outcomes and working in their best interests. We continue to have extremely high marks, probably our highest marks in the entire battery of questions for the survey that are in this section around governance. However, it appears that from 2020 to 2022, there was some softening in people's perceptions of positive perceptions. But I'm feeling very confident after talking to the Polco statisticians and looking at the data myself, that we're looking at the effects of a macro sort of sentiment as opposed to something specific to Clive. Macro, I mean, uh, the growing kind of feeling, it appears that throughout the United States of distrust in institutions and some decline in their confidence that through our democratic processes, we can govern well and achieve good outcomes and keep everybody fairly, all the other, all the things that we want to make sure we're doing if we're doing good democratic governance well. So if you compare the overall confidence pie charts, pie charts from 2020 on the left, 2022 on the right, you see that there is the same number when it comes to excellence. What we had was some bleed from the section of people that in 20 said good, to 2022, a smaller group of folks who uh, reported good and an uptick in the number of folks who said fair. War remains largely the same. So why am I pretty confident that this is a macro as opposed to something specific to Clive, a national type trend as opposed to a Clive specific trend? On the left of this side, and we'll get the next, the follow it are very similar. You're going to see us go through a number of, of items where you'll consistently see that Clive is higher than the benchmark. Even on items like informing residents about issues facing the community, where we had a nine percentage point, uh, nine percentage drop, which is statistically significant, we are still ranked number five out of 169. So what this tells me is that everybody is sort of feeling a little sinking, a little softening there. But we still, among all these communities are staying right at the top. But we still, among all these communities, are staying right at the top, top ten results compared to all the other communities that have used the survey. The other thing to note is that there might be a bit of a process result here that we're seeing. These questions were only introduced into the sort of standard survey for Polco in twenty twenty. So we haven't had all of the communities necessarily using this new battery of questions yet, which means that we've had sort of smaller numbers of comparison communities. As more of them jump on board, it makes sense there would be some other excellent communities like Clive that are up there at the top according to their residents and might even rank higher than us, which naturally then would push us down a little bit. But all of that aside, let's take a moment just to appreciate how strong these numbers are. Eight out of three hundred and forty-two in the overall customer service of Clive employees. That's something that all of us as staff are very, very proud. I know, and I shared that with the directors today. We were all especially proud of that. Two out of two eighty-six on public information services. For me personally, because I have such a lot of hands on that work, to see us sustain our highest numbers that we've ever had two years in a row now is a real mark of success. Five out of one sixty-nine on informing residents about issues facing the community. There were three out of two seventy-seven treating fairly, six out of one sixty treating residents with respect. It continues, eight out of three forty-six for value of taxes paid to Clive. I feel like I need to call that one out in honor of our former mayor Scott Surtzina specifically. I think it was his favorite data point in the entire survey. And then you can see all of the others as well. Probably the last one I want to call out or last couple is overall direction Clive is taking, two out of three hundred and ten consistency throughout all of those years that we've asked that question. And then number one out of two hundred and seventy-six on their overall confidence in Clive government. While there was a statistically significant drop, we're still top of the heap when it comes to all the other communities we're compared.
Y'all should be really, really proud of that, particularly number one out of two hundred and seventy-six in overall confidence in Clive government. That I know when we shared this with staff and we were talking about it and we're going to share it more broadly with all staff here in the future. Particularly proud of that one. That's not an easy thing. And yes, there is the, the general softening of some of these numbers nationally, but even with that, number one out of two hundred and seventy-six. Something to really think about as we go into strategic, and that's the case with everything that you're seeing on this presentation as we go into strategic planning next month, y'all go into strategic planning next month is what this means in terms of your residents trust you to make the decisions for this community. That's basically, if I had to summarize this slide in one statement, it's that. So it's a good thing to remember that as you're going in and making the decisions for the next twelve to eighteen months that you want us as your staff to take on, remember that.
So Matt and Pete, what, what do we ascribe to the kind of relatively low number for the welcoming of resident involvement? I mean, and how do we fix that?
So I, I asked the statisticians about that in particular, and they said that across the nation, they had seen a decline on that number. The reason they think it is, is it has a lot to do with the pandemic, that just the expectations have changed now in part because of that pandemic experience that people have for being engaged by their community and welcomed into participating with their community. I think that we might want to look and see further, maybe using some Polco tools about how people would like to be engaged more in the future, like thinking about new technologies we might want to use. See if that starts to change the way that they feel welcome into this process. Does that answer your question, Councilman?
Yeah, it does. Pete, thanks. I'm, yeah, that'll be interesting to monitor maybe in twenty twenty-four to see if it bounces back up and then maybe you can, you know, just kind of, you know, ascribe it to the, to the pandemic, but I guess we'll have to look at.
But if that's the new normal, right, we'll have to adapt to it. If it's not a temporary thing, then we're going to need to continue to think about ways that we can make people know that they have been hurt and give them chances to feel like they participate with real stakes. Here's one I like to share too. In general, your proximity to your government sort of aligns with your confidence in governments. So municipal government is where most people feel like they're probably closest to it, especially in a community like Clive where we're pretty small. We also have the benefit right now, I would say, when it comes to perception of not having the same partisan dynamics that you see at these other levels of government. Even knowing that we're not comparing perfectly levels of government here because each one does something a little bit different. I'm very, very happy to see that we are at ninety-one percent good or excellent in Clive compared to the federal government at forty-four. But then also the county government and the state government. In the past, we have asked about county, I decided to add state government this year as well. If you look at the far right where you see those bars, that's a nice new addition to the report this year. It makes it really easy visually to see sentiment. If you've got a lot of excellence, you can see it in those long bars that are there at the top, a lot of good long bars at the top. No other level of government got anywhere close to thirty-nine percent excellent the way that Clive did in this survey. Here are some of the top ten performances, few we discussed just a moment ago. I've highlighted some that I think are particularly important, probably should have called out snow removal, stay in their top ten is a good one. And a real credit to our public works teams and our parks teams, everybody who gets out there sharing the news about how we do that annual, those annual projects well. But I'll give you a moment just to go through and look at a few others. Cost of living, four out of two seventy-two. That's a wonderful thing to be able to say, especially considering that we did the survey work while that inflationary pressure was really starting to ramp up and become more of a headline in our public discourse. So now let's talk about the special question section we had this year. This was all about Harbach, the Harbach Center. So we asked three questions. The first question was about how you would like to use the space or what would you like to do in this space on a temporary basis? So what do you want to get into right now? The second question was, it was about what do you think are the most important things for the city to offer? Not what you would use, but the most important things that you think the city should offer in the Harbach Center. And then the third question was, given the importance that you have placed on some of those things, would you be willing to pay more taxes to see them realized? So here are the results we have for what people would use in the short term.
If you remember from our conversation at the Harbach Center, we went really hard through what ones do we put on this list, you know, in terms of fitting the question in.
Right. And then here are your results comparing on the left-hand side, what would you like to use now? But what do you think are, is important? Now, I don't necessarily think that this is the most natural thing to compare because obviously on the left side, we have something that is very time bound and on the right side, we have something where we're asking about what would we do in perpetuity? So it's not a perfect set of list to compare. But I did think it was interesting to see when you changed up sort of the framing of the question, how we started to see movement on some of the items, especially those top three up there and then also childcare that's down in the circle at the bottom. We had a real clear movement to the top of those items that were considered by most people or almost most of the respondents as being important for the city to provide. So up there at the left, you've got library branch with material, excuse me, up there at the right for importance. Fifty, over sixty-eight percent said library branch with materials for checkout is important. Space for food pantry, community services, sixty-four percent. Congregate meals, older adult programs, fifty-four percent. Those are your three that bumped up over the fifty percent threshold, but not far behind. At the bottom there was childcare services at just at forty-nine percent. And here you can see the comparison now between the things that people said were important on the left and then whether they were willing to pay for it on the right. Now, the statisticians at Polco told me that when they end up with these kinds of questions where they're asking about, would you pay more taxes or not? A lot of times they end up with noise and very little signal. On this one, they started, they said that we actually have some pretty strong signal here. Anytime you've got folks saying, or at least half the folks saying that they would be willing to pay more taxes for an additional service, as they've said here, for food pantry, community services space. That's something that merits more research. There's not a definite no. And I'm cautious enough in the politics to know that I'm not in the game of absolutes. So I'm not going to tell you this is an absolute yes, that the community would be in favor of this. But it's certainly a strong enough signal that I think it warrants additional research and engagement with the community to see if they really would be interested in going down this path and doing what they said, raise taxes to pay for something like this, going into the Harbach Center.
You know, it's, it's interesting that, you know, you've got a few of those really clear, you know, like the space for the food pantry and the library branch, then you've got a cluster of, of quite a few that are kind of clustered together, right? I'm, I'm looking at the multipurpose rooms, the gymnasium, the indoor playground, the childcare services, right? You know, there's, there's like two percentage points differentiating those.
And the other neat thing about that, Councilman, I think is that all of those services are things we're experimenting with now in the Harbach Center. So while we have some real concentration, I sense some clarity on the things the residents see all are most important. We also see that there is some degree of importance applied to those things that could still fit along with the other programming that we're doing if at the Harbach Center, even if we were focused just on those top three.
Well, and, and I'm wondering, you know, and again, I know I'm kind of trying to put myself in the, the survey taker's, you know, feet, but you know, the multipurpose class, you know, rooms for multipurpose classes and meetings, the, the gymnasium even, and the indoor playground and the childcare services, I'm seeing a theme there, right? It's, it's something where members of the community can kind of, it, it's an educational space, right? With, with maybe with, with the exception of the gymnasium, right? But you could still do physical education there, you could do things like that. So I'm, I'm wondering if that's kind of the underlying theme and why those are maybe bunched together so closely statistically.
I, that could be. One other possibility that I see is it's a, just a sense of, of coming together and community and sense of bonding with your neighbors. I'm, that's, you know, that's one of the questions we ask, and I'm anxious to look at that in a lot more detail, looking by geographic area. My first couple reads through all of that, I did notice some lower numbers consistently in the district one and district two. So our easternmost neighborhoods, when it came to a sense of neighborliness in Clive, when it came to a sense of connection to my community. So some of the things that make me think, huh, what might there be in connecting some of that response with what people are saying that they crave to have at a place like the Harbach Center? I also don't want to overstate it because certainly the city is not the only entity that connects to what people's feelings of neighborliness or the ways that they feel about, they identify with their community. There's a whole lot more going on than just what we do in the city.
Pete, quick question. In regards to the speculation on whether citizens would pay more taxes, if you look at page ninety, there is only only one issue there, space for food pantry services where citizens have indicated they would pay higher taxes. In every other different area, they'd indicated, no, they would not.
Are you talking about, well, they, they had four options to respond on that. And I don't have one moment here.
I'm talking about the options. It says, please indicate whether you'd be willing to pay higher tax for the programs amenities. Yes or no? And it goes to each one of these. And ninety percent of them, ninety-five percent are no. The only ones that they're saying yes is for space for food pantry services as far as majority.
Uh, yeah. So for the rest of the council, Councilman Klein is looking at page ninety of the report that you all received and when that specifically asked whether you would be willing to pay higher taxes for programs. He is correct. The only one that pushed north of the fifty percent threshold there with me here, I can read them for you if you'd like, but he's correct. It was just that one that he identified.
It's just the one.
Yep.
I just want to make sure we're clear about that statistic.
The other thing I would offer is that these are snapshots, so they give us some indication here, but it's also something that changes with some time. And we know that the Harbach discussion is one that is going to require ongoing watching, adapting, continuing to course correct as you all see fit on all of this. So this is a useful place to understand where we are right now. It doesn't tell us everything we would about where we might be going in the future or how opinions might change.
Pete, I think that's true for any citizens poll that we do every two years. There's no doubt about that. It's a snapshot. But this is a snapshot of current public opinion. And as we've seen, our numbers are pretty consistent across the board and, and they have been. But I think it's relevant when you look at the data, which is real data provided by this at this time.
I think there is an aspect though of, you know, obviously we have citizens that think this is important. Maybe they're not willing to pay taxes for it because they don't really fully know what that's going to look like. And so maybe it's a situation where we need to take that into consideration when we're going into strategic planning and we need to take, you know, that, that data that says, you know, those five or four things that were above that fifty percent or really close to that fifty percent mark. We need to keep that in mind as we're, as we're, you know, planning out what we're going to do with the resources we already have.
Well, I think that's what we do in every strategic planning session. There's no doubt about that. I don't want to speculate on what people's motives are or what, what they're, how much information they have. I'm just reading from the data right here that, that's pretty clear.
If, in case you were wondering about sub demographic groups and their opinions on all this, I did have some opportunity to dive a little deeper here. On willingness to pay for the various services, there was almost no statistical difference between respondents by geography, even among those that live closest to the Harbach Center. So the relative importance and then also the willingness to pay did not seem to vary based on how close people geographically were to the Harbach Center, which I found interesting. By age, except for just one random area, there was which was the gym, there was only, when it comes to the gym, a statistical significant, significantly difference between eighteen and thirty-four year olds versus the fifty-five plus group. But on none of the other questions, was there any statistically significant difference? There was no statistically significant difference by age on any of the importance questions, even the congregant meal and childcare, which I found quite surprising because I expected that younger folks and who had younger children would more likely to be in favor of that. When asked whether they'd pay more for taxes, there was no statistically significant difference by age across any of the categories as well. So now let's take a look at a couple of things where I believe there's some signal that we want to keep our eyes on something, on things so that we continue to make some improvements in these areas. Transportation and traffic, streets, specifically street conditions and traffic. This is one area we've identified consistently in the past survey results as well. Now we have even more data, some of it going back to two thousand and eight to inform how we're thinking about things. So there at the very top, overall quality of the transportation system, seventy-three percent higher than the benchmark, but that is a statistically significant drop from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two. Now, the transportation system, when they ask these questions, they're talking about trails, they're talking about streets, they're talking about public trans. It's a lot of different things that go into it. If we really want to see how people feel about getting around by car and how they feel about their streets, we need to look at those numbers that are below there. Traffic flow on major streets, great to see that that's still higher than benchmark. But it is a difference from where we were in twenty twenty, though compared to where we were in twenty twelve and twenty, and twenty-eight, two thousand and eight. It is still maintaining a higher level. Ease of travel by car, wonderful trend line there to see that folks are able to buy vehicles to move through the city and what they feel is a better way. Same way with traffic enforcement, happy to see that sustained at such a high level of performance. The eighty-two percent there is not statistically different than where we were in twenty twenty. Traffic signal timing, one that I would expect to see sort of lower numbers in general on because nobody loves to sit at red lights. Still, cars are in power with what we see throughout the, sort of the rest of the, the comparison group. Street repair, though, is the one we got to pay special attention to. That's a consistently kind of low number there from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two, but from where we were in twenty eighteen, that's a significant decline. Now, we all know, street repair is not something, it's like a ship, we're not going to turn it quickly. And we've made you all with your direction and your good policy have been directing staff to make significant investments and making sure we get on top of the maintenance, stay on top of it and have a good schedule for rebuilds as they're needed and repairs. So we'll watch this year over year, and I do believe with good persistent effort that we can start to turn these numbers around. Finally, a point here about just the general mood in the community about the economy. So you'll remember that we have very, very high So you'll remember that we have very, very high marks when people think about the overall economic health of Clive. That was one of our strongest areas. But when people were specifically asked about what the economic environment is going to do for their household in the next six months. Their opinion really started to soften, so really it's moved into that negative territory. On the far left bar chart, you see that biggest number of folks were right in the middle. They didn't think that over the next six months, it was necessarily going to hurt or necessarily, uh, help their financial situation. But then very close to it, 36% thought that the next six months, the economy would have a negative effect on their household incomes. And then some even down there at the very negative end of the scale. At the top on the right, you see then, well, the way that that number has moved around over time. This is definitely one of those that is completely susceptible to things that are way beyond what Clive can do. These are looking, we're looking at people's opinions about all different types of factors, national, state, probably even the fact, things that factor in just to their unique careers. And what type of work that they do. The availability, there are a few areas though, where I think we see some real nervousness among residents starting to come up. Affordable housing, affordable quality housing, there's a number that has had a statistically significant drop, a very steep drop just since 2020. Cost of living, even though it's perceived to be very, very good in Clive compared to our peers. That is a statistically significant drop from where we've been in both 2018 and 2020. Availability of affordable quality childcare, again, a number that is consistently trending down for as long as we've been surveying on that question. And then high-speed internet, that's just a couple of data points there, but it is a difference that's a significant. And then that point about taking care of vulnerable residents, it may not seem like that's a natural one to put here. But when I was thinking about this and then thinking about the ways that focus, folks responded to, should we do a food pantry? This perception that there are vulnerable residents who are in need of basic services right now. To me, I think there's some connection there and a sense of how is the economy working for everybody right now? And if it's not working, who would be those folks who would be most immediately affected, vulnerable residents? So that's why I think we might be seeing some of that. And it also could be just the persistence of the pandemic that's shaping some of that as well. With that, Your Honor, I am at the end of my deck and I would be happy to take any other questions that folks have.
Questions for Pete.
Pete, could you make sure you send the email of the deck out to members of the council, please?
Yep, absolutely. I, I wanted to make sure, I, I needed a little extra time to dive into this. But then also make sure that my own interpretation here didn't end up, um, putting too much shading. On the way that you all would be looking at the data and interpreting it as well. I do encourage you all to get into it, uh, if you haven't used the Tableau tool yet, that's a wonderful place online. Where you get a little easier to organize the data and compare different things across the different cross tabs. The big headline though is consistent excellence, another year, another desk out of data point showing that there's a lot that people love about living in Clive. And a lot that they appreciate about their city.
Well, I'm not hearing other, other questions. Thanks for pulling this together. Great news.
Thank you, Your Honor.
All right. Well, Pete's moving back to his chair. Did we have any correspondence, Matthew?
Everything was in the packet, some of it was larger than others. Thank you very much. Peter, you ready to give a report?
Yes, I'll be brief. The Soil Quality Restoration Cost Share Program has entered its next phase. Last meeting, we awarded the contract and we're off and running and letting people know what their numbers look like for the cost share. Every person who was in the first hundred people to register, every household has been contacted. Some have decided to drop off, which means we've been able to start working down the, uh, waiting list, which was substantial. So with residents who are participating have until late August to get their payment in and finally secure their position in the program. But I am feeling very confident that we're going to hit at least that hundred, uh, hundred resident, uh, participation number that we've been shooting for. It's been a wonderful experience. Thank you very much to our friends at Polk County who've helped out. The big work now is right in front of us, but we're in a good position to get it done well.
I have a question about that. At the watershed meeting I attended, I happened to mention what we'd been told the seed mix would be. And Polk County had reacted very negatively to that and said they would be working, um, with the, you and the contractor. To try to change that, any updates?
Yeah, so I talked with John Swanson from Polk County about that. And, um, he, after talking with the contractor, which was a meeting that happened after the meeting with the, with the watershed management authority. He's on board, he's fine with it at this point. But, um, I think there was some concern that the blade width of some of the tall fescue that's in the mix. Might end up giving people a different look and feel in their yard. But after looking at it with the contractor and, uh, the Polk County folks are completely on board. They're not concerned that it's going to end up looking different.
Have him send that information to me because he was very clear about it. So I'm, I'm very surprised about that. Yeah, John Swanson.
So yeah.
He said that, um, Polk City had had 100% bluegrass in their mix. And we're at 90% fescue, 10% bluegrass, if I recall.
I would, yeah, that sounds right.
Should at least be more 50/50. So I'm surprised that as strong as he was about it. And others in the room were basically saying, well, we're really shocked that we would have agreed to that.
So, no, and, but on the other hand, on that, uh, councilwoman, I, we, we. We have an expert in our landscaping contractor who has used this particular seed mix on soil quality restoration work that they've done, including his own yard. And the pictures that we have of what that restoration's looked like, I feel, uh, really good. The expert in all this really locally is John. And when John then said to our contractor, I'm good with this, I felt good then go taking John's, uh, guidance. So I'll love him double, I'll double check, make sure he's still absolutely there.
Well, I, I trust you. If he was that strong on it, he was just so strong at the meeting. He said, well, want to get that adjusted, he thought. I figured it was probably a cost savings, that's kind of why.
It's expensive seed, so. It's expensive seed.
The fescue is much less, so.
Yeah, and it's a tall fescue with a narrower blade, so not like some of the wider fescues that we see in southern habit, uh, southern latitudes in the United States. It's my understanding right now. If we have problems though, while we're doing it, we'll have to course correct. Because getting this right and making sure people have a positive experience is a prerequisite for being able to do more of this in the future, which we want to do.
Well, Pete, maybe you could give us just one more minute, uh, talking about the process. And the overseeding and the impact on the grass that's already there and the weeds that are.
First, the weeds, if you put good organic compost and other nutrients on your yard, everything that loves good nutrients is going to benefit. So if you've got weeds in your yard now, this will mean that you'll likely have weeds in the future. And you'll need to take a decision about how you want, you want to live with them, or if you want to get rid of them, and if you want to get rid of them, how you want to get rid of them. Soil quality restoration does not take care of weeds. Uh, when it comes to the overseeding, there are a couple of things we're going to be doing that are going to increase the likelihood of good germination. First, our contractor wants to move very quickly. They want to get started now in the sort of, uh, next to last week of August, so just past the midpoint in August. Uh, I think August 22nd, the date we set to do these installations of the SQR. And then knock them out in the next three to four weeks. That's a much tighter timeframe than what they accomplished in Polk City. He's using quite a bit more equipment than they were up in Polk City, which I think will make them efficient. They're still subject to the weather. But getting it done earlier means that there's more time in that good growing season for the grass to pop back up out of the compost. Next, there are a number of things that residents will need to do to increase the likelihood of that good germination. And they need to get out there, and if there are any heavy spots where it went down a little heavy, if you just use a normal lawn rake and flatten that out a little bit, feather that out a little bit. Before the compost ever goes down, you also need to make sure you mow it a little bit shorter than you typically would. So those blades are standing up straight as much as they can after the compost goes on them and don't get pushed over by the, uh, compost. Like a longer blade would be if it hadn't been mowed. So that's a practice that will be helpful. And the other one is give it water. You have to water after you do your soil quality restoration application, so that you do get that good germination. And so the existing turf has a chance to pop up out of it as well. All of these must-dos are outlined for residents who are participating. We need them to do their part so that we ultimately have, uh, good success. We'll be going back though and looking at all the applications between me and our friends at Polk County to make sure the application was done appropriately. And then just to judge, go on and remind folks, I hear your next things you need to do to get a good result with your yard.
All right, any other questions for Pete?
Just a couple of quick updates, um, Clive Historical Society has a new board member. So they, congratulations to Terry Brown, he's also on our planning and zoning commission. So they, they are already seeing some of the fruits of their labor. And, uh, they're continuing down the path of trying to find ways to expand their reach and get more, uh, involvement. Potentially, you know, uh, a rebrand, but, um, that's still being discussed. But I know that they're looking forward to participating in the Latino Heritage Festival, uh, in September. So, uh, that's progressing well. And then, uh, just one other note, uh, was able to get Doug and Matt to take me around and see some of the developments around Clive. And, and what, you know, we, we actually found one that Doug's going to have to reach out to. They're doing something maybe they shouldn't have been doing. But, uh, but no, that I appreciate the time and it was very informative.
All right, thanks. Ted?
Uh, nothing to nightmare.
Eric.
Just a reminder that the Do Tour will be here in Des Moines this weekend. It's free. I would encourage everyone to go out. It's a world-class event, uh, and last year was a pre-Olympic event. So I would encourage everyone to come out and check out the Do Tour, uh, downtown Des Moines.
Thank you, Eric. Susan?
I just had a really good meeting with the watershed, Walnut Creek Watershed Management Authority over in Waki. And they've got some good examples of some bioswales there. So if you're ever out that direction, it was, um, at their new library.
Very good. Legal counsel, anything tonight?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Yeah.
Few items, Your Honor, uh, just a reminder, uh, tomorrow, uh, Saturday morning are your, uh, interviews with Lyle and your prescribed times. For strategic planning and then the workshops that we'll have in the middle of August on August 16th and 18th. At the Metro Waste Education Center at the, at the, um, our material recovery facility. And then, um, Saturday morning, uh, August 27th, uh, and here in the council chambers. Also want to mention that the next council meeting will be prepping you on a couple of the key items that you'll be discussing. Most importantly, the 86 Street, uh, implementation section, of course, we had the first half of the 86 Street piece, which was really the, the plan itself. And now staff will be ready, uh, to start that conversation on implementation, uh, phase. At the August 11th meeting to prime the pump a little bit, if you will, for a more in-depth conversation during strategic planning. So, and also we'll have, uh, Snyder and Associates will be here to do the kind of final presentation of the corridor planning work. Associated with the HICMA interchange, uh, a work that we've been doing with Urban Dale and the DOT. I know I, uh, briefed the council on that a month or so ago, but now we're kind of coming to the end of this phase of that work. And then starting to talk about grant opportunities and where we may go from here as the DOT continues their plan. So those will be two big topics that'll be coming up at your next meeting. One last thing, or two, two more things, um, wanted to mention this afternoon, I was invited and, uh, attended a, a really good discussion. With a number of people throughout the metro area related to consideration of a sobering center, um, in Polk County. So this is, uh, the idea behind this is really a diversion, uh, tool, um, in, in terms of folks that may end up in Polk County jail. For example, where a sobering center, um, and it, it wasn't just limited to alcohol, drug, it could be drugs and, and other things. That, uh, would be a diversion tool, uh, to keep folks out of jail in terms of, is that the appropriate location for them to get treatment? It was a hell that the Broadlands Medical Center with, uh, their new president and CEO. Anthony Coleman, who actually happens to be a Clive resident, he actually lives two doors down from me, uh, who just, uh, joined, uh, the executive team there from California. And so, uh, it's a passion of his and he's bringing the conversation to the forefront. I think Polk County's had conversations about this in the past, um, but it was really good to see the engagement that we had from a number of communities. A lot of participation from Polk County and City of Des Moines, a number of, uh, other, uh, partners. So it's again, the beginning of a conversation. I think there's going to be a task force that's, uh, kind of a steering committee that started to really start working through some ideas and details and financing. And what that looks like for, for Polk County, but just wanted to make the council aware of that. So some good conversations, uh, on that this afternoon. Lastly, there is, uh, an item that I want to gauge, uh, some council reaction off of, we've never had this presented to us before. Typically, the only professional fireworks, uh, show in the city of Clive has been Clive Festival. We have a request from one of our, uh, local churches who is having a kind of an anniversary of sorts, uh, in September. About whether or not they can have a professional fireworks show, uh, in our city and whether we would permit that. The current city code, uh, provides for a lot of leniency for the council. It is, uh, what I would call a may clause, not a shall clause in terms of this consideration. But with the council's discussion on fireworks, uh, a few meetings ago, related to some state law changes. I wanted to gauge, uh, and you don't have to answer me tonight, if you want to think about it, I need to gauge the temperature of the council. And whether or not you would, uh, be willing to consider, uh, a permit process essentially for professional fireworks show. That are outside of the, essentially the city's control, like the Clive Festival show is. And, um, our, our, uh, we've never had this request before and our, our code is a little more vague. It doesn't have a detailed prescribed process for this consideration, but it does give you a lot of flexibility in the way it's, uh, laid out today. So, um, we've had some conversations with fire marshal, with Matthew about this. They're really looking for kind of policy directions, as am I, on, you know, is this something council's not interested in and will communicate that? Or is this something that, um, you're willing to consider and then want to see a policy developed? I don't think we would have it ready for September, um, by the time that this, uh, church wants to do this. But it's again, asking that more broader beyond just that specific request, this broader question of, um. Other professional fireworks shows other than the one that we've had in our community for a number of decades.
I'm wondering if we could gather information on what else is done in the metro. I mean, do we know what?
We have some neighboring communities that allow it. Our Urban Dale is, I think, the one we looked into the most. They have a very detailed prescribed process of all the kind of the checkboxes that you have to have. It's very expensive to for a permit applicant. And again, there's insurance requirements, do you have, do you require public safety to be staged there? Like we do with the Clive Festival fireworks show where we have the, the engine company on scene. Would you apply that and then apply the charges associated with that to a, a, a non-governmental entity that's having the fireworks show? So there's a lot of considerations, but Urban Dale's the one maybe we've looked into the most. I don't know, Matthew, can't remember if we've looked much broader than that. Yeah, because we knew that they actually allowed it, uh, additional professional shows.
15 years ago, we had a special birthday celebration for Bob, where we shot off fireworks. And it was done at the Burbandale Golf and Country Club. So it was real specific about where you could go. We worked with the same group that does the fireworks at the Iowa Cubs. And so they knew where it was possible within the city, community, yes. And so we would probably want to have a restriction like that, like maybe it's by the athletic center or something.
Yeah, in terms of you want it near residential areas, your other, obviously we have some high, few high-risk facilities. Like the tank farm, for example, on the east side of the community. But, you know, so there's a lot that could go into that policy. Uh, again, happy to, to, you know, put, add that to the, we'll call it the strategic planning list, if that's something the council's desire. But I really wanted to get, if there was a, a gut reaction, like now, Matt, we're not ready to consider this at this time, we could communicate that. But again, you don't have to answer me tonight, but I will need some direction from the council to get back to the, the app or the prospective applicant. On, uh, a decision.
Well, to me, the where would be really important, not just.
Well, in the wind.
Time of the night.
Yeah.
So it'd be a middle of September show and it would be at a church that's along the Greenbelt.
What day of the week?
Don't know that yet. Probably be a weekend though.
Um, ours was a Saturday.
That would probably would be a weekend. So I mean, that's, again, for me, it's first blush. Are you even willing to consider it? And if you are, then staff can come back with a process of how we look at tackling the specifics.
I mean, my, my initial reaction is the same as Susan's, right? I think we, we develop it where there's only limited areas that makes sense to, to allow it, if we're going to allow it, right? Like, you know, it's not just anybody that can pay the fee and hire a, you know, a professional company can throw it in their driveway. I'm not saying everybody would, but. Hire a, you know, a professional company can throw it in their driveway. I'm not saying everybody would, but.
You might have some, though, that would consider it depending on how flexible you were.
Right. And so I, I don't think we want to be that flexible.
And then drought factors.
Right. That was one thing that we talked about is weather considerations is if we're in a drought. And there could be a lot of factors we could dig into and this could. It'd be a pretty involved process again if the council wants to look at it.
Ted, did you have something to say?
Uh, I was just gonna say, um, to me, that's, this is a very low priority and my, my gut reaction is, is no. Um, there's a lot of people who struggle with fireworks. There's a lot of animals that struggle with fireworks. You know, people expect it fourth of July, um, around here, they expect it for, for Clive Festival. If it just starts randomly popping up, you know, in September or November or whenever, um, I think that's problematic. And, and again, to me, we have so many other priorities. This would take a lot of staff time and I would just, uh, my gut reaction is no.
Yeah, from my, from my perspective, you know, this is kind of a nebulous area right here. You know, my concern is we, we start going down this, this trail and all of a sudden we're getting a lot of different feedback and applications. And then. You know, our, our yearly fireworks show becomes a monthly fireworks show. Uh, I've gotten a lot of feedback on fireworks as well and, you know, the, uh, the impact on, on, on animals, on service dogs, on, on veterans, on PTSD. Uh, so, you know, a lot of our residents can, can stomach this for, for a, a day or two. But boy, I, I think when we expand this, we let the genie out of the bottle. So our staff has only so much bandwidth and I agree with Ted. It's, it's a low priority to. Me, um, if they want to celebrate, uh, I, I'm all for that. I think there's other ways to celebrate without fireworks. So. You know, to me, we've got too many more important issues facing the city of Clive than, uh, to develop a lot of time, uh, with, with fireworks policy.
Oh, I'm hearing two definite nodes. I'm hearing two only with a lot, a lot of restrictions. The sentiment I'm getting is that comes down. They're disagreeing.
That's how I'm, what I'm sensing as well. I know I kind of threw it on you here and we're expecting it, but it was something that really just popped up yesterday that was kind of came out of nowhere. So. I think we'll, again, what we'll do is we'll take that direction and indicate that to, to the entity that was interested, the church that was interested. And say that, that, you know, perhaps it might be considered down the line, but not at this time.
I think it's.
That's all I have, your honor.
Anything else for the good of the order this evening?
August sixth, Battle of the Burbs. That might be the next time that we're all together. If you haven't signed up, please do.
Anything else? If not, we'll adjourn at seven thirty-two.
Good night.
Thank you, everyone.